I'd like to bring the May fourth Beaver Creek Township Zoning Commission Hearing to order please. It's six P M. Roll call.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Geist?
Here.
Mr. Porter?
Here.
Ms. Dalton?
Here.
Alright.
Okay, before we include the agenda, I just want to make certain that the notice went out to the public as expected. That we have a quorum, and we do. The interesting thing about tonight is that we are missing a member and missing an alternate, so we have four. We need to be cognizant of split vote decisions. Not that that makes a difference, you vote the way you want, but if we have a split vote decision, we have to either stay till we resolve it, or stop and pause and table until the next time we come together, until we have a resolution. Did I get that correct?
Yes, although I would advise, this was just something that came up in the last BZA meeting, is that if you have a motion, and it is not resolved one way or the other, and it is left open for thirty days, the motion de facto passes.
So what you're saying is if our next scheduled meeting is before that thirty days?
Then you can make a decision on it.
But if it exceeds that, are we permitted to suspend the rules to extend to the thirty-fourth, fifth, or whatever date?
You will just need to defeat that motion. You can't leave it hanging.
But it can be brought back?
Yes.
Okay.
You can make the same motion as many times as you choose.
Okay.
That was just something that came from our last BZA meeting.
Just want to make sure that we all know what the rules are.
It should be okay.
Okay, and in addition, there was discussion about whether or not we all received the documents that we needed to in time? And if, and I felt like they were a little bit late for us, but I was re- able to recoup and read. Has everybody had the opportunity to read the documents?
I have not read the whole document, but did receive.
You felt, you felt comfortable with the last time we met, though, in what we were doing? Okay. Alright. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Alright. I think we are ready to hear the case.
Excellent. I'll just begin with the public notice, as we typically do. This is zoning commission number, uh, case number eight thirty-three. The Community Development and Risk Department brought forward a proposed zoning change to parcel B zero three zero 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 two zero zero three five zero 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 four zero zero. Rezoning it from a combination of O-one office and I-one light industrial to solely I-one light industrial. This parcel is owned by a utility company which will be expanding its use on the property, and no office uses will occur. This action will be considered a zoning map amendment. I did prepare a staff report for you, if you are ready to hear it.
I'm ready. You guys ready?
Excellent. Um, so I want to start with just a little bit of current parcel information. Again, uh, the parcel ID, we just recently listed, I won't list it again. Um, it's the postal address of eighteen nineteen Dayton Xenia Road. The owner of record for the parcel is Dayton Power and Light Company, which is now AES. The parcel is forty-seven point eight seven six acres. It's currently zoned as I-one light industrial with some O-one office zoning along the northernmost, about two hundred and thirty feet of the parcel. The current use of the parcel is to house electric utility infrastructure, and includes an overhead power line easement across the parcel. This use occupies roughly half the parcel, with the northern half of the parcel currently being used for agriculture. Um, we have a rationale for the rezoning request. The reason the township is seeking to rezone this parcel, excuse me, is to align with the recent plans from AES, a public utility, to expand their use of the parcel to include storage of major electric infrastructure components. Representatives from AES have met with township staff to explain the proposed use of the parcel. Essentially, the section of the parcel currently being used for agriculture will now be used as a storage area for key infrastructure component storage, until such time as those components might be needed to repair the electric grid. These components must be stored at a strategic, at strategic locations in advance, as they are critical to the electric grid operations, but also require twelve to eighteen months to construct. It's important to note that townships, according to the Higher Revised Code, have no authority to regulate land use pertaining to recognized public utilities like AES. However, the parcel owner has agreed to work with the township to allow the rezoning process to take place before, um, like, in, in, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? At the same time as essentially, in, in, uh, lockstep with the necessary environmental compliance that they are working on with separate agencies. In this case, Green County Engineer, who serves as the Green County Stormwater Engineer. The current zoning of the parcel is irregular for township zoning standards. The single parcel is divided into two distinct zoning districts. This can cause confusion, and it's not consistent with zoning best practices. Besides this inconsistency, it is clear from discussions with AES that no O-one office uses will be taking place on the parcel. The entirety of the parcel will be utilized for operations of the public utility, mainly storage of, um, grid components in new kind of industrial warehouse buildings that will be constructed. Um, the remainder of the parcel that's not, that does not contain, you know, the, the buildings to house these, uh, components, is reserved for stormwater facilities like detention basins, retention basins, um, stormwater channels, those kind of things, um, will be on the remainder of the site that's not being placed into use for storage. So in summary, rezoning the parcel in question to a singular I-one light industrial designation serves two key purposes. First, it matches, it will match the zoning of the parcel with the expected observable land use, as stated by the parcel owner. And second, it will remove a zoning irregularity from the township zoning map. Uh, with some additional information I would like to give you, um, this rezoning action has been reviewed by Green County Regional Planning, and was recommended, approved, recommended for approval by their full commission. Due to some staff leave time over at Regional Planning, township staff did not get the physical decision letter that confirms their recommendation at the time the staff report was due to y'all, the week, the Friday before. However, staff, in this report, it says staff expects to be able, and now staff has delivered to you the, um, RPCC recommendation letter, which shows that indeed it was recommended for approval. Um, additionally, the proposed site improvements have been reviewed by the Green County Engineer for stormwater and drainage compliance for EPA regulations. Staff has had conversations with the engineer to confirm that the site will comply with all EPA stormwater requirements. And the engineer has provided, provided staff with the EPA Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan document associated with the site. That's the larger document that you all received. And the checklist, which was included in the case packet. And that was the, the summary of what was included in the larger document. So the recommendation is that staff recommends approval of the proposed rezoning. However, in between our, uh, meeting where I requested your motion to send this to Regional Planning, and this meeting, I've had some communications from zoning commission members who wanted some additional resources, had some questions and concerns about, in, in my recollection, specifically the environmental impacts of this use. Um, I wanted to address that, I think, this is difficult for me, because in almost all cases, the zeal that you guys have for protecting environmental resources is appropriate and appreciated. In this case, simply because the township has no zoning authority for public utilities, I think considering this information is not appropriate for our body. That it is, it should be, I believe, sufficient for staff to tell you that the appropriate regulatory agency has provided proof to staff, which he has then shown you, that those environmental requirements are being met. So I would request that we focus on kind of the core issue of this case, which is, should the zoning map reflect the use that's gonna be on the ground? Or does it stay the way it is and not fully reflect the use on the ground? I think that's the key issue here. So I would request that we limit the conversation about environmental impacts and regulations only because we cannot use that to make a decision about whether AES should operate there, whether they should operate the full site or half the site. We can't request that they, well, we can request, we can't require that they place buildings in any kind of specific configuration. So I wanted to present that information as a way to perhaps, um, you guys feel the responsibility of your decisions every time you make a rezone, every time you approve a PUD or a site plan. And that's, um, that's a good thing. You guys should feel that responsibility. In this case, you, you don't have to feel that responsibility. That responsibility is on the shoulders of the Green County Engineer, and frankly, the state legislatures, who in their wisdom decided that the townships should not have the power to regulate utility operations. Um, I'd be glad to kind of discuss this idea further with you, but that is my recommendation as we discuss this rezoning, um, going forward.
I hear what you're saying.
Can I make a comment?
Soon, sir.
When can I?
There will be a point where the public comments will be opened up, and at that point you'll be asked to speak.
Yes, so the process is that we hear the staff report, then we hear from the applicant. We're not ready to hear from the applicant yet, I just wanted to clarify something with him. I understand that, then after that, we will open it to the public. Okay, so this is a step-by-step process that we use.
That's what I asked, see where I can jump in.
The question that I have, and I respect what you're saying, if you could scroll up just a little bit about the part where it says that ORC, the last word in it was agencies. It's important to note that townships, that paragraph. However, the parcel owner has agreed to work with the township to allow the rezoning process to take place before necessary, um, with environmental compliance, um, that takes place with the separate agencies. Does it specify which agencies?
Does, does this report?
Does ORC specify which agencies?
The ORC does not. It's the, it's the EPA that specifies, well, it's the, so we have a stormwater permit that's issued from the EPA. We are one of the co-permittees, along with other county, or, uh, townships, rather, that use the Green County Engineer as their officer, their, their manager of this stormwater permit. So the ORC doesn't necessarily tell you who it is. It's the EPA guidelines and regulations that say this person administers the stormwater permits for this large area.
Right.
It's not always the county engineer. It can some, in other governmental areas, it could be some other official, and this case it happens to also be the Green County Engineer.
Okay. The reason that I was asking is adjacent to the property, if I followed correctly on the map, and sometimes I'm too traffically challenged. Um, is there not a wetlands that runs there? And has the wet, is the Wetlands Association an agency that would be considered under ORC?
No. They are, uh, don't get me wrong, a very valuable organization, but they have no authority to review these kind of, um, plans or anything like that.
Alright. And then the work that Mrs. Taft's group was doing does not have any, um, authority, correct? They don't hold authority, they're recommend, recommenders.
Especially in this case, yes.
Alright. I'm satisfied with your answers, and I take that recommendation that you gave about the, um, environmental agencies. I take that to heart. Anybody else have any comments they want to make about that?
Yeah, I just have a couple of, um, this particular parcel, according from what I'm understanding, we really can't do anything about. They're, they're gonna store the stuff there whether we change the zoning or not.
Correct.
So my whole point is, the property to the west is R-one A-A, and then there's another zoning area, uh, uh, that's the same as this one.
Yeah.
Is this not pretty much spot zoning? I mean, what are we doing with these people here? And that's, if they can do it anyway, what, we can't stop them, why are we even here?
Because the zoning map, as it's, as it's filed, should be as representative as possible of what's going on, or what we know will go on in the near future. That's the primary reason to perform this one parcel rezoning.
Right.
The, to answer your questions about, and yes, in fact, why don't we just bring that up on the map so that we can have a, uh, a visual here?
It puts pressure on those other property owners that at some point down the line, their zoning is gonna be changed whether they like it or not.
Well, I, so typically, and, and let me-
I mean, couldn't it be a non-conforming use?
It could be, but again, when you have non-conformities, you run into additional challenges with zoning. Again, with AES, it's a little different, right? But if, your typical legally non-conforming use or structure, it puts great restrictions on any modifications they want to make, to, for instance, a building that's already on site. Like if, we'll give you an example, there's a, a house over on Traybine, it's a residential home, it's zoned I-one. It's an old artifact of, of old county zoning. They wanted to put an addition on their house, they cannot, because it's legally non-conforming use, they're, they cannot further the non-conformity in any way. If, that gives you an idea of why we try to avoid non-conformities.
I mean, I mean, there's been such concern about this issue, maybe that would be the way to go to, uh, I mean, I, I'm just, you know, that gives us more control in the long run, if they have to come to us, if they want to do any changes.
Well, most-
I, I don't know.
Most users would, AES being a public utility would not. And so the request from us really is about, in this case, having the zoning map match the use on the ground. Now, I wanted to address your, your other, um, concerns, so, so I'm gonna turn on the zoning layer here.
There we are.
Okay, so these parcels are the ones you're discussing, that additionally have, oh, you know, combination O-one and I-one zoning.
Correct.
This rezoning, and, and actually the community plan update that we're doing is gonna necessitate a conversation with these owners about, hey, what is your current and, and expected in the next five to ten years' use? And then at that point, we will do the same thing. We'll seek to make a zoning map amendment based on our conversations with those folks.
Based on those, those areas not, not to, three, four, five.
Absolutely not. Right, so, they would be, they would be their own separate decision.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Um, it's just that we would rather get this done, we know AES wants to be basically, you know, by September, they want this fully operational, so it's a, it's a very quick-
Yeah, I have no problem with them doing what they want to do there, I'm just, the zoning changes what, you know, it's just, like I say, kind of like spot zoning. I mean, that's, because-
We're not even sure where, when it happened, why it happened, I-
Why this- Talk about that once, my turn.
When it's his turn.
Well, I know why it's happened, I mean, it's just like anything else, they expect the growth of Beaver Creek, and keeping the frontage for office use, I mean, makes sense. You know, you look at all the houses down along seven twenty-five, probably from the Dayton Mall that are now attorney's offices, whatever. I mean, and I'm sure that's probably what is in the thinking of this. You know, I, I just don't want it to adversely affect these other property owners, you know.
I think that's reasonable. I would tell you that the rezoning we do here doesn't, it doesn't necessarily affect any rezoning, even for an adjacent parcel, in terms of like, we talk to these folks and they say, actually, we, this is ag, we, we farm this, and we plan to farm it, you know, for twenty years. It won't be, you, you wouldn't look at that request and say, oh, well, there's I-one right next to you, so you can't do that. So we wouldn't recommend that. You would look and say, hey, this is a public utility. It operates a little bit outside of the normal zoning rules, so you don't need to consider. Now, conversely, if they wanted to say, hey, I'd like to make it a daycare center, then we might look at that use, not the zoning, but what's on the parcel and say, you know, putting your daycare center right next to the fifteen-foot security fence, for, maybe that's not the correct thing. So that's how this rezoning may or may not affect future rezonings, if that gives you an idea.
Okay.
It's a bit of a poor, uh, example, but-
Yeah, I understand. I mean, I'm just trying to protect the other property owners here, I mean, you know, have one parcel-
So I get the understanding, uh, the reason to be concerned about protecting the other property owners, but regardless of how this is zoned, AES is gonna do it regardless, we have no control over that at all.
Right, exactly, I understand that.
It's a moot point, in my mind.
Well, I don't know if it's a moot point, just because it's setting precedents. I know that it's AES, and it's a different category, but, um-
What precedence is it setting?
Well, that, if we do change it. That, and then these people don't want it changed, you know, or maybe a couple of them do, a couple of them don't, whatever. You know, the people that are in favor of changing it to all I-one are gonna point to AES, like you did it for them.
For the reasons we just talked about.
Right, exactly. But that's why I say it's setting a precedent.
So I, I think, I understand your point, right? But I would say, what, what Dawn, our legal counsel, has told this board and the BZA a number of times, that each one of these cases is, is on its own merit. You, a previous case does not necessarily set a precedent which you must follow for any other future cases. Now, you can certainly look back at similar cases and say, this is what's similar, this is what's different.
Right.
But it, you don't have to, by rezoning this, let's say, to all I-one, if somebody from the other side came and said, I, I don't want to be all I-one, we couldn't use this case as a way to say, well, unfortunately, you're forced to, because this one did. Or the opposite is true. I'd actually like to be ag and not I-one at all. Well, just because this property next to you is zoned I-one, doesn't force you to have a similar zoning.
Yeah.
So, uh, that's fine.
Rick, you have any comments, questions?
No, this time.
Jeff?
Nope.
Okay, at this time, then, I don't see anyone here from AES, correct?
Well, we're the applicants.
So you're the, oh, I'm sorry, you are.
The Community Development Risk Department is the applicant.
Alright, so, um, I'm ready to move to, uh, the open portion, public portion of the meeting. So, I now open that, and you are here. The, what we ask is that you please come to the podium, give your name and address, and is there a time limit, Lori, that we ordinarily?
I think since he's the only one, I think we're okay.
Okey-dokey.
My name's Robert Messmore, and I live at sixteen forty-three Dayton Xenia Road, and I live next door to all this.
Okay.
So, uh, can I walk over to the map?
You may.
I can do, can you zoom in a little bit on the-
You said it was sixteen forty-three, sir?
Yeah.
Yeah, sixteen forty-three.
And Mr. Messmore, please continue speaking up a little bit for us, so we make sure it picks you up.
Okay.
Oh, perfect.
Yep.
Uh, my own, the thing I was, was worried about, is I'm kind of speaking for my son-in-law. This is also my daughter's house right here. We do have a problem occasionally when we have the super-heavy rain, and all the runoff of this runs right across here. And their house becomes kind of an island, and, you know, that happens only about twice a year. But they said they're gonna do retention ponds or something like that, because my son-in-law, he's active duty, uh, and he's deployed right now, so I'm kind of talking for him.
Sure.
He was a little worried about, you know, when you do warehouses and stuff like that, you got paving area, and you end up with a lot more runoff. You know, that was kind of his concern, but evidently that's addressed, that they, they're gonna have retention ponds and whatever. So I guess that, that like I said, that, you know, the water always seems to run right across, right against the house. Doesn't get in the house, but, you know, the kids, my grandkids thinks it's great to have a little river, you know, running through right here. Uh, when I bought the property back in the nineties, they had taken a marker and did this O-one along the whole side of the road. And before I bought the property, Mr. Townsley went ahead and got changed, you know, for, for my piece of property here, for this, you know, the agriculture, or whatever it happens to be, to get rid of. Because we had talked about, you know, hey, uh, what's wrong with building in an O-one, or, you know, an O-one? He says, well, it's okay, but if your house burned down, you couldn't rebuild it.
That's right.
And so I says, that's a no-go, so he went before you guys back in the nineties, what have you, and got it changed. And I noticed that they never changed theirs, you know, type thing. So that was this thing, we found out that they just had taken a marker and just decided, hey, this is all gonna be office someday along the road, and then, you know, pieces there. So my, my comment was the fact about the runoff, but evidently that's addressed, that there's gonna be retention ponds and that sort of thing to take care of that.
And just to address your concerns, having looked at the report, which details kind of what their drainage plan is, a very basic, you know, without pulling it up, a very basic is, you're gonna have a large detention area kind of right here.
Yeah.
And the goal is to feed the water into this waterway here.
Yeah.
So, there's, there may still be some runoff. I mean, you're right next to the, the waterway, that's the way the water is supposed to flow anyways. However, this should change the course of it in such a way that you should experience less.
Well, it, from what you're saying, it's gonna catch all the stuff that they're doing here.
I'm gonna ask them.
Basically, where all this water comes from is over here. And it runs down, and it runs right along here, and then makes a turn.
So it's probably gonna have no impact on that at all.
Huh? So it may not, you know, but it's not going to add to it.
No.
They, they cannot make it worse, right?
Yeah, so that was, they don't have to mitigate what already happens, they just, they cannot add. Yeah.
Any more of it, yeah.
That includes my three minutes.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Since there's no one else here to speak on the public, uh, side, I'll go ahead and close the public, correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Did you have questions you wanted to ask him?
I just had a quick question for Max about that.
That, that- Oh, go back to the map?
No, 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 yeah, there, you're fine.
Okay.
Um, when you had the retention pond area, are they gonna have to move that high tension line, or can you do a retention pond under?
You can do that underneath the line, just no structures.
Okay, the public portion of the meeting is closed.
Alright.
Now, we just have discussion among ourselves to, uh, end in a motion that is reinforced by what's been brought to us. That would have been my question about the water under the, uh-
I know they're up high, so I mean-
Yeah, they're pretty high. Um-
I got a general question, has really nothing to do with the terrain or anything else. I'm just curious if we reclassify, whether we reclassify this or not, given that we have no real control over what this utility company does on this property, within whatever, what, what constraints do they have in terms of what they can do on this property? And what is that defined by?
Right.
So-
If you're talking to EPA, they're regulated by all EPA.
You just mean in general, like, I, I, if I'm understanding your question correctly?
Right, their current plans are to put a storage place there. What's their plans down the road? And, and could they turn this into a mall? I'm just, not making this-
No, that's fair. So, so the way the ORC reads is, it doesn't give us the power to regulate the operations of a utility company for the purpose of providing the utility. If AES, let's say, for the sake of argument, decided, actually, we'd like to develop this into a mall, they would fall under the same zoning regulations as anyone else.
So I got a question too. So whether we rezone this, that front parcel, or not, and they build their storage place there, there's nothing we can do about them building the storage place there?
Correct.
Even, uh, it's an office, zoned office.
That's correct. Um, the, the, in fact, let me, I think this might help to just see, um, the ORC section, and I'm just gonna pull up the-
And my next question goes to gentlemen out here. Have you had a chance to talk to somebody about that runoff, to make sure? Us rezoning this, or zoning this, isn't gonna change how they construct things?
No, I just said kind of why I came here, just, you know, to hear, you know, because we knew they was gonna build something over there, and Nick says- And Nick says, I wonder what's, you know, if I'm gonna end up with more water run across my backyard. And evidently not, because what, what they're gonna build out there is gonna get caught and be diverted. And what we've been dealing with probably is gonna stay the same. Because, you know, that, that basically just runs along the property line, comes across from where the school is.
So, so who is the correct, I, I just wanna make sure he gets in front of whoever is the people that are making those decisions on the running basis.
So if you wanted to speak to the agency that was overseeing the stormwater management. You would wanna speak with Green County Engineer Stephanie Goff. She serves as the stormwater engineer. She would be able to tell you about the report that was given. And give you better insight than I could frankly into what it actually means.
I can do that.
That would be my recommendation.
It happens maybe once a year. You know, just when we have these super heavy.
Sure, I understand. If I was the property owner, I'd, I'd wanna speak to whoever it was, just to make sure that, you know, things aren't gonna get worse.
Two or three times a year, so I'm used to that.
So, just, um, you know, I've mentioned the ORC and its limitations on our power. I feel it's fair to share with you. So this is ORC section five nineteen point two eleven. Um, and the first paragraph reads, except as otherwise provided in division B or C, and we can go into that exception in a little bit. Sections five one, five one nine point oh two through five one nine point two five of the revised code. Confer no power on any board of township trustees or board of zoning appeals in respect to the location, erection, construction, reconstruction. Change, alteration, maintenance, removal, use or enlargement of any building or structures of any public utility or railroad. Whether publicly or privately owned, or the use of land by any public utility or railroad for the operations of its business. As used in this division, public utility does not include a person that owns or operates a solid waste facility. Or a solid waste transfer facility other than a publicly owned, so private waste facilities are not included in this definition. Um, and then the exceptions go on to be subsection B is telecommunications towers, which is why we are allowed to require.
Sure, the last few words of that sentence are pretty important. For the operation of its business. So if AES got in the business of doing something other than providing public utility.
They would likely, so there, there's other state and federal guidelines as to what can be classified as public utility. So, public utilities are given, for instance, I, I, without trying to patronize you all. Like a public utility like electric companies are given special dispensations to operate, for instance, as monopoly. That's usually typically illegal and, and is busted. However, we recognize as society the benefit to having only one set of power lines running through our, our neighborhoods. If, if we didn't allow electric companies to operate as monopoly, we'd have to have three and four sets of power lines that each individual power company owned and operated. So that is why public utilities in general are given these kinda above the law.
I get that, I'm just looking at the words.
And you're right, for the operation of its business, I don't believe that we are in danger of. The state and federal guidelines coming to say, actually, a power company as part of its public utility operations can. Operate a for-profit, you know, fair enough, sale, so. But that is where I'm getting this, this, um, guidance, okay? From our legal counsel as to our inability to, to apply zoning regulations to this use.
I appreciate this.
Absolutely.
I absolutely appreciate this, um. The only other thing that I wonder about, um, and it's not probably relevant to the decision that would be made today. But as you go up and down that corridor, um, there's a lot of surveying being done already. It looks like it exceeds those, uh, parcel lines. It goes all the way down, I thought. Uh, maybe I didn't see that correctly, but it looked like there were, there were flags all the way down through there right now. So I was concerned about expansion of that, um, power grid. Along that, uh, back side, if it was possible, um, that was concerning to me. I don't know that, um, you know, was the power grid there before or after the, you know, um. Well, I'm sure it was there before the water, but, you know, was it, was it before a lot of regulations were done when it came to EPA? I'm still concerned about all of that. Um, and for that reason, I think that a kind recommendation to AES for them to have a third party. Look at that, um, and establish a baseline ongoingly. I don't think EPA is gonna tell them they have to do it. I don't think our engineer is gonna tell them they have to do it. But I think it's got to protect our resources and our natural resources. And for that reason, I think they should comply with, not comply, but consider that recommendation.
I think that's reasonable, and as we have discussions with them, again, they were, um. You know, having worked with the rep from AES.
Yes.
I do believe that if we supply them reasonable recommendations, that they will likely follow them. They seem to wanna be a good neighbor in general. They, they asked us, hey, do you want any special? You know, considerations about screening and frontage and all this kinda stuff. So I believe that if we come and say, hey, look, we'd really appreciate if you would take a look at the existing infrastructure, which was built. You know, like you said, maybe, maybe prior to more stringent EPA regulations as they are now. And just provide a report that shows the existing use on the site is, is not causing any major environmental issues. I'd be glad to bring that to them and report back to you about how that.
Thinking the question that I sent, there was verbiage about that, um, do we need to say that here tonight?
Um, I, I. Hmm, I don't know that you guys can like in a motion or resolution or anything direct me to do that. However, this I think serves as a record that you have requested that of staff. And so I consider that a record of your request and that will.
So does the record need to go in the minutes or just having the email enough? That's what I'm asking.
Oh, I mean, our, the recording of our session.
It'll be part of the minutes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, let me not mince my words then. Take me a minute to find it. Recommend an environmental health, safety and due diligence report from a third party to determine risk to the wetlands or LMR.
Okay, I would be glad to bring that request to the AES rep that I'm working with.
Okay, we have, I, I think the motion is already on the table by you bringing it in, but we can repeat it, correct?
Uh, you guys will, you guys will need to craft the motion.
If we're ready, anybody else have any conversation, anything else they wanna say? Okay, I'm ready.
Oh, before we make the. I understand Ann's point and is that gonna be included in the motion? I mean, I, I just, I, I mean.
Saying no.
Request them, I mean, and they say yes or no, I mean.
I think that for that very reason, that including in the motion is probably inappropriate because we cannot require. But I, I hope that you will hear me when I say I've taken that request to heart and it will happen. And I will report to you how that, how that works out.
That's fine, I. Good.
Okay, alright. We'd like to do the honors this evening.
You're so passionate about it, once you make it.
Me? Well, I guess we're just basically making, uh, I, I gotta.
Where's the language?
Eight thirty-three zoning map amendment eighteen nineteen Dayton Xenia.
If you guys would like some assistance, I can provide some maybe recommended language for the motion.
Okay.
Um, I would recommend that you move to amend the zoning map of Beaver Creek Township. For the address eighteen nineteen Dayton Xenia to be zoned I one light industrial.
Okay, uh, concerning case eight thirty-three. Rezoning of parcel at eighteen nineteen Dayton Xenia Road. I recommend, according to staff, that we rezone the, the parcel to I one light industrial. From I one and O one mixed use.
I'll second the motion.
Any more comments?
Alright.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Geis?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Dalton?
Yes.
Thank you, Board. Motion passes.
No, we didn't do, we didn't approve the agenda.
We can do that now.
I know. I can't believe we didn't do that. I think because we have to say that at this point, because we still have some business to do.
Correct.
Could you make a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Dalton?
Oh, yes.
Great, Board, thank you.
Who seconded that one?
I did.
Oh, you did, okay.
Alright, um.
What's next on the agenda?
On the agenda next, I have three sets of minutes that were set out to you previously for your review. Uh, some of them were for, thank you, sir, for being here. Alright, see you ten thirty.
Or ten thirty?
On, uh, you have two sets of minutes from twenty fourteen. These were part of the, um, uh, pack of minutes that were, uh, not completed due to staff illness a while ago. Um, and then you have your minutes from the previous session where I requested this motion.
Can you give me the dates real quick?
You have minutes from January ninth, twenty fourteen.
Actually, January ninth was approved.
It was.
In February twenty fourteen.
Okay.
I just get it removed in time and Carolyn didn't realize.
Okay, so apparently, January nine, so apparently you have two sets of minutes in front of you. October second, twenty fourteen and April sixth, twenty twenty-three.
It's interesting because I think the last time we met, that was the set of minutes, the January ninth was the set of minutes. That Kristen said over and over again, I didn't get that.
Oh.
So I think we've approved them a couple of times now. Let us just move to October second, twenty fourteen. And for the record, um, the people who are here voting on this, um, you are not voting for the content. You are merely that are in the minutes, you're merely voting that there is a record of minutes being submitted to us. Because they weren't there and we need to have them there. So let's do them one at a time, um.
Motion to accept October second, twenty fourteen minutes.
Second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Geis?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Dalton?
Yes. Now the April sixth minutes.
I'll make a motion if we approve the April sixth, twenty twenty-three minutes.
Second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Geis?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Dalton?
Yes.
Thank you, Board. Uh, before we adjourn, I did wanna speak to you briefly about the, uh, work session we did with the community land use plan. Uh, the community plan document, um. We have compiled all comments, both from the zoning commission and from the steering committee that kinda is overseeing the effort. We actually met with our planning, uh, next team today to have kind of our final round of discussions about all the comments. Uh, my understanding from them is that what we will get back is a, kind of a list of all the comments. And how they were either addressed or not. There will be some comments that through conversation we do not agree with, we did not implement into the plan. Uh, but each person who sent comments will be kinda given a record of how their comments were addressed or not in the plan. Um, so I wanted to let you know to be, you know, that we are very seriously considering yours and the steering committee's comments. Um, we still think we are on track to bring this in front of you in the, um, zoning commission meeting in June. Um, so that is still the plan and I'll communicate with you further, uh, as we approach that date. But I wanted to let you know, um, that little piece so that you guys, uh, you know, like I said, understood that your comments were being, uh, considered. And, and how you would get a record of that, so.
Just curious, the third party that was hired to pull that document together, or I assume they're making the changes to the document?
Correct.
Yeah, are they eventually, once done, they're gonna hand it over to you so you'll be able to maintain it?
Yes, so once, in fact, the way we have it scheduled is that we believe the twenty-second of May. We'll get back kinda the final draft two point oh. We'll take another pass at reviewing that, make sure it, in our mind, meets all of the changes we talked about and things like that. But then the documents ours from then on to administer and as, you get what I mean.
Like a standard format you can edit?
Yeah, it will be in a Word doc and PDF and all the different formats that we can then edit subsequently.
So when do you think you will receive those?
It's in May twenty second.
I didn't hear that.
So we think we will get back the second final draft.
Yes.
On May twenty second.
Okay.
I would just say, once we get it back is when we will be determining. With all the comments and the comment, um, kinda checklist. We will determine at that time how we are going to reach out to all the folks that commented and discuss those comments with them.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so there potentially could be another work session with us or no?
I don't believe.
Twenty second one for us to review it before we see it in a.
I don't believe we will, now, we plan to send you like we normally would in the case packet.
In advance.
A, an advanced copy so that you can read it. However, we do have constraints with budget.
Sure.
Um, and so we don't believe we can extend this project another month without, without going back to the trustees. And asking for additional funds, and that's something we're really trying to avoid. So we don't believe we're gonna have time to have a second work session or another steering committee meeting. Um, at this moment, we're not planning that.
So, I hear what you're saying about budget. You would have to have that budget, you're, you would have to ask for more monies. If we were asking for more changes in that document by the next, what are they called, next something?
Planning next.
Planning next company. But if it were something that is editable, like you said, um, Jeff, that could be something that we do at this level.
I am not comfortable making plan edits to the document without the consultants involved. At this stage, I guess is where I'm at.
The, part of the contract with them is to actually do the presentation, the final presentation, not only you, but also the trustees.
I see.
And there's some development behind that.
Okay.
Uh, that's, that's where I think, uh, fundamentally, I, you know, the, the package has to be completed. Uh, by this time, it, it is ours once we get it, but then, again.
So are they planning on going hard over on anything we could probably come back and say for your next edit update?
We can absolutely amend this document from what's, from when it's originally passed, just like the zoning resolution or any other.
After it's in your control.
That's correct. After, after, frankly, once it's, I'm assuming it will go well, but once it's approved and ratified by the trustees. It, it becomes our governing document and just like any other that we use, we can make changes to it as we see fit. In fact, that is the, that's exactly, that's how you best use a comprehensive land use plan is you regularly update it.
What's the media plan for this? Are you producing, you know, printing hard copies?
So, we will have, I imagine, some available for view like in the office itself. But the entire document will be available online on our website. We expect that there will be some form of kind of.
You don't have a big budget to go produce this?
We can't like print them and send them.
We do have some built in, again, for the presentation to the, to the organization and stuff like that.
And Randy said about the presentation, will the, the contractors be here or the, on the fourth of June, is that?
I believe it maybe is first of June, but yes, they will, they will be here.
Ours is the first.
It's one of those ones that runs.
Is it on the first? I don't know.
It falls on the first this time.
But yes, planning next will be. But yes, Planning Next will be presenting the final document to you along with staff, but yes, they will be here to present key points of the plan.
So, my thought about that was, you said you'll have, after it's all said and done and blessed by the trustees, then we can edit it as we see fit. But we've only been doing that once every five years. It's never been something that we visit frequently, it's only required to be or recommended to be best practice once every five years, it's not something that we're gonna be doing.
What's the five-year dictated by? Is that like in writing anywhere?
Best practices.
It's just best practice, it's all we've done, so I just want to make sure that we all understand that.
I, I think I understand what you're getting at. I can tell you that through conversations with steering committee, I think what we've landed on is there's a series of kind of timeline for various goals, some in six months, some in a year, some over a couple of years. We kind of floated the steering committee, I think it went over well, and I think this is what we're gonna end up doing is we're gonna bring that steering committee back at those key kind of timeline points and say, are we doing the plan like we said we're doing it? Hold us accountable.
Heading check.
Yeah, exactly, hold us accountable for the changes we said we were gonna make with this plan. Tell us if we're on point, off point. And those are perfect opportunities to then bring that same accountability check to the zoning commission.
So the hands point then, are you, at those periodic points, are you planning as a, as a, as a group to take control and edit? Or are you gonna go hire back out a third party to?
I think for smaller edits, I think we're comfortable making those changes, just like we do with the zoning resolution on a piece-by-piece basis. I think if we were to ever, you know, at that five-year mark, that we would likely, depending on what we've identified.
Depends on the lift.
Yeah, exactly, but, but I think for the most part, the small edits that we wanna do, you know, as we see stuff on the ground change, that's stuff we can handle. Mostly the, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I, and, and again, think the, think of the five years as a fundamental reach back out to, to not just individuals to see what they want to do, but it's the whole, it's the big picture, looking at the big picture of the plan itself.
Right.
You know, what we don't want is the special interests to specifically make those changes along the way. This is a public, you know, it's a public input, you know, organizational type of, of document that's been put together. And so I, I think as a whole, I think as a community and a township, we need to keep it as that.
So is it your desire to reach out periodically, i.e. every six months or every year, to, to do like a heading check? Or is that actual plan to do so?
Yeah, that's the plan.
That's plan.
That's, that, in fact, it's, it's looking to be written at, one of the comments was, let's write this as a part of the plan. And I one-hundred percent agree with that, so it's not just, hey, we'd like to do this, it's, hey, this is something we've told ourselves we would do, so.
So to clarify, Jeff, those sections four and five that had the goals written in them, those have timelines associated with them, and those are what the steering committee will look at, did we meet those, those criteria?
And you're gonna add to that then the objective or plan to put in these periodic reviews?
So I got a question for you, because I'm kind of new at this.
Sure.
When you bring this to the board, when you bring this to the commission next, on June first, what's the ask gonna be? So, so when I'm looking at this document, I understand, okay, well, this is what they're asking of me, so I can either vote a, you know, yea or nay or whatever. Are you gonna be asking for complete zoning changes on all that, or are you just gonna say, hey, this is the document, we just want you to see it and approve it?
That's a great question, and I think, I think this is a good opportunity to kind of talk about how this document interacts with our other kind of major operational documents. So, this comprehensive plan, if it's passed, does not affect any change to the zoning resolution or zoning map. Those have to be separate efforts. The reason we do this plan first is because the Ohio Revised Code and best practice in general is that you should make those changes based on your comprehensive land use plan. There should be a plan and then you follow through, that's kind of the general sense. So, any actual change that occurs from this plan would be a zoning map amendment that we would bring to you for, you know, a recommendation to the trustees and then the trustees would have to approve it or not. Any map change would follow the same, it would have to come here, in fact, actually, the map changes.
It's all those things that you're claiming that you're gonna do in, in the section four and five, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, basically, it's a, it's a supplemental document to the Bible, the zoning code. It's not the code.
It gives us, it gives us a foot to, a leg to stand on when we are justifying our decisions or justifying our requests. We can say, look, this guy wants to build a shopping mall over here, but here's our plan and it says this should be low, you know, low-impact residential or something, so that's obviously not a good fit. That would give us the ability to say, this, this doesn't fit our plan, and so you would either need to request a rezoning and then have a really good reason for it to not match our plan, or it's not gonna happen. If that gives you an idea of how the document, this document would be used to make decisions that you guys are used to making, the zoning map and text amendment.
And then, so help me with the chain of command here, so to speak, so we approve it, so then are we the final approver? Or does it go to the trustees next?
Correct.
So they can deny or, or change it as they go, right?
Say that again.
They can either approve or modify it. And then would that come back to us for?
No.
The way this works is that, the zoning commission provides a recommendation to the trustees.
Okay.
That is what your motions and decisions amount to, is a formal recommendation to the trustees, hey, a board of your citizens has heard this case and we think this, that gives them additional input into making their decision.
Okay.
Okay?
No problem, I'm just trying to follow the.
Yeah, absolutely, that's a good question, you know, please.
Let's say that we, we could unanimously say, we don't like it. They can still overturn that.
Sure.
Yep.
That they, they respect your work and, and that you put into your, into your recommendation.
In fact, I think only, only one time in the three-plus years that I've been here have the trustees and your decisions not aligned, only one time.
Swimming pool covers.
Was it swimming pool covers?
Yep, yep. That was right at the beginning of my, right at the beginning of my tenure here.
You had to bring that up.
Anyway, so.
That's where you get started, right?
Oh, yeah. So, thank you for kind of hearing me out on the, the progress of the comprehensive plan. I am looking forward to some vigorous, you know, discussions about it when it comes your way. If you have any questions in the meantime, don't hesitate to reach out, I'll, you know, try to give you as much information as I have.
Any notion about how many days in advance of the meeting we'll, we'll have it to read it?
It's probably gonna be the Friday before, like it normally is, you probably have about a week to read it. We are going to try to do it as early as possible, but we really only have about a week between when the final draft is done and when you guys would actually.
Would you mind, if you can, maybe send like a CRM with it, a comment resolution matrix, whatever this list is, so we can drag, hey, we said this and, and, yeah, they dressed it or they didn't.
I think that's part of what should be available, so.
So we're not looking at that real time in the meeting?
Yes, I think that's a good idea. So yes, that is the plan, if it's available, to send it out to you guys. Now, it likely will not be included in your packet, like the, because it's individual folks' comments, it's more about letting those individuals know how their comments were resolved. The plan itself would likely be the majority of what's in your actual packet with the agenda and things like that. Does that make sense?
I'm not following you.
So.
There won't be in a radish sheet.
Yeah, we, we, we typically would not want to include, like in the actual case where we're saying, we would like you to approve this, we would not also like the previous version.
Yeah, I'm not asking to approve.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you guys will get it.
Yeah.
But it won't be in the formal packet, it will just be.
I don't care how we get it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was understood that, that's not gonna be like a public document.
No, 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 I just, I mean, it will help me sort of check the boxes, say, yeah, I think they got it.
Absolutely.
And, and when, where, where there was a disagreement, I can hopefully understand why.
There's, and that's the goal, is when it's not implemented, there's a reason given, so. And I'll just put this out there, especially given the importance of this, I would be open to one-on-one conversations in the lead-up. You know, as much time as you guys need to spend to have any lingering questions or concerns answered before we get there, I'd be glad to do that.
Which is why I said work session, not so much because we needed to work that document to, but to work what we were thinking about it more collectively before we went to vote. That was really what I was searching for.
Why don't you, is it okay with the board to allow me to take a look at our timeline a little bit greater detail? Maybe float this by Planning Next to see if we can have, as long as it was understood that this work session was not to make any major modifications, but maybe to be, to explain the changes that you guys specifically requested and how they were resolved, I think that's something that's reasonable and.
Reviewing on and refining.
It can certainly, it won't push the project any further.
Have to happen between the Friday we get it and the Thursday we meet.
Yep. I think we could, yeah, because, yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
It, it's not, well, just remember, you have not fundamentally read, you've fundamentally read the entire document so far. This is gonna be the, the modification that you see.
So this is what I'm saying though, is maybe before, if you already know what kind of comments, like you already wanna meet with me tomorrow. Like if you already know what comments are, are confusing to you, or comments that you know you're gonna just, not gonna address them, and we've all had different ones, maybe we should come together and talk about those as opposed to just so we know what to expect might be coming in the final draft, so that we're not hung up on it. I think it'll be more.
Yeah.
Easier to taste.
In that sense, like a work session where, where that's the goal, again, please allow me to review the timeline. We really are on a very tight.
I know we are.
So I, I agree that that would have value, I just need to take a look at everything, how it's gonna work and get back to you on when that's possible, is that a reasonable solution for now?
I mean, you're not gonna get it until.
I'm not gonna get it until the twenty-second, and it's, it's not gonna be any earlier.
Comments, you already know pretty much where you're standing with what just didn't even, you know, just don't even pay attention to that Planning Next. Go to this, you know what I mean, you already know that.
To a, to an extent, but we really had.
You know what went into, you don't know what's coming out of.
That's kind of what I wanna say is, I don't, we won't have the how were they implemented or.
Do we get it?
And sometimes we won't have the why were they not implemented until we get that back, does that make sense? So I.
Alright, well.
We just, that's what I'm saying, it's, it's, we are on a very tight timeline and I won't, we will have about a week where I'll have all the information that you guys are looking for between that and when we ask you to make the decision. Now, one thing we can do, if, you know, certainly, we are able to, especially in this meeting, we are able to schedule a non-normal or a non-standard date for a zoning commission hearing, so if we think that that's something that you absolutely wanna have and we're worried about having enough time to do it, which frankly, I'll be honest with you, in terms of like public notices and things like that, April twenty-second, I'm, I'm gonna be sending notices out before I even see the document, that's how I would have to, have to do it. That makes me a little uncomfortable, but I trust Planning Next to deliver. So, if it, it would have to be like the second Thursday of June, because any further than that, we wouldn't have time between when we needed to get the notices out for the trustees at the end of June. If that's something we wanna consider, that would give us an additional week, maybe enough time to have a work session that doesn't feel too rushed for y'all, I wanna, I wanna try to accommodate you, but.
My only, and maybe this is what you're thinking about, my only thought is, you, you don't wanna turn that presentation meeting into a, a bunch of Q and A.
Right.
Right?
Right.
You want it to be a productive, smooth, here it is. And we're just sort of, it's not the first time we've seen it, but we, we kind of don't really have any fundamental concerns. Otherwise, that could turn into a, a three or four-hour meeting with a bunch of Q and A.
That, that's right.
Which, if, yes, I mean, obviously.
Not have extensive questions.
Obviously, don't be sorry about having questions, obviously, you know, I think everybody would prefer a smooth meeting.
Presentation.
Where all, where all the questions were previously answered.
Yep.
The if it has to come to a three or four-hour meeting where a bunch of questions are being asked and answered, I'd rather them get asked and answered. And we may, that's what I'm saying, is with the timeline we ha, we have, that may be what's required, unless we wanna do something non-standard, like, for instance, push it, push the normal meeting date out a week to give us an additional week, where we might be able to comfortably have everything together, give it to you, set a work session and then give you, you know, the work session is in one day before you guys have the, the meeting.
I, I, I do this daily with my customers and it's always a challenge trying to figure out what's the best option here. Give a read ahead, where you don't have a dialogue, or extend that meeting so we can have all the questions and answers in the meeting. And I don't know, it, six, one, we have a dozen.
It is, it's a crapshoot, but you want it to be as palatable as possible, and that's, that's the challenge.
I mean, the fact you're getting a read ahead is, is good, you, the fact you've got a week to look at it. The challenge we have is that we don't have that dialogue that's changed prior to meeting.
Trying to get at is where can we have dialogue? Because I think the collective dialogue is gonna be more productive for us.
Can, can we dialogue outside of the meeting?
You're really not supposed to, now, one-on-one.
Unless it's a work session.
You cannot have a, or, or you're really, yeah, you cannot, is how I will phrase this. Meet with any more than two members, so you cannot meet with a quorum of members to discuss. Let me, there's some nuance, but here's how it will basically work. Let's say you guys all are at a barbecue together, that's fine, but if you start talking about a case at the barbecue.
I'm not talking about physically meeting, either through Teams, virtual meeting or in person, but exchanging information.
That's correct, no matter how you guys exchange information.
That's why I asked.
You must do it in a public forum if you are talking in a, in a, at a number of members that is a quorum about the case. It must be in a public forum.
With this being the twenty-first century, maybe we should, should we adjourn at this point? So all, all we're trying to do is establish next steps, right?
Well, just in the same vein as what I'm talking about, if we're gonna continue discussing an upcoming case, then I would recommend that we, yes.
Okay, well, then I'm gonna save this and then you can redirect me if you need to, this is the twenty-first century. There are a lot of different ways that communication can occur, and I'm not talking about this. What if you did like a table for two, like the speed dating thing where two people talk and then they go over to the other table and you do around them? Just saying, it could work.
It's definitely against the spirit and letter of the law.
I was trying to stretch the letter of the law, okay?
That's okay.
I was trying.
But if you're looking for a date.
Because you're talking about two people talking.
Yes, but if y'all were in the same room doing that?
Yeah.
It's very clear.
There's plenty of rooms in the.
No, no, no.
Just trying.
I would recommend.
Okay, so then we're gonna have to, then we're just gonna have to do it in a different way.
Can you ask for a short recess and maybe Max and I could speak for just a moment? Before.
Sure, I'd like to have a recess.
Okay. Can we step outside?
Ten minutes?
Five minutes, ten minutes.
Five minutes, we'll come back at seven fifteen.
Thank you. Well.
Or you don't have to.
It's seven fifteen, we're back in session.
Okay, so after discussing it with my supervisor, I think this is, this is what we wanna throw out. I think as long as we can all understand that this work session's purpose is specifically to discuss the comments that you all put forward and how they were addressed or not. And that the purpose for the work session. And that the purpose for the work session is not to present any substantial changes to the document. Now, some minor ones like. Small word changes may arise, but. The kind of comments that you guys presented previously, we we do not have the bandwidth.
Are they gonna have time to iterate even over small changes?
I think. The small stuff, I think we can maybe manage if we're talking like, cause it is just a word document, we can go look page six, line five, change this to that. But some of the comments we were getting were. You know, system, they were at the core of the document and we just do not have the bandwidth to do that, so as long as everyone understands that. Here's what I think I would propose. I would propose that we have a work session. Instead of the normal meeting on the first. Does that make sense? And in that way, in fact, it will not be a work session, it will be a public meeting. Which I think furthers the cause of this being a community document. And then at that meeting. You will say, okay, we're gonna have a meeting next week. We would like to have a meeting next week to to hear this plan.
That would be the eighth.
Okay. That that's gonna be the challenge.
What is?
Challenge will be how many of us can be in town, June eight.
Well, if you guys can't do that, then unfortunately, what we will have to, if the works, if if that timeline doesn't work.
Who does that not work? I don't know if I'm.
I think I'm flying back from San Diego that day. I don't know what time my, I don't know what time my plane comes in.
We we have an obligation to the trustees to present your recommendation by a certain date.
We have an alternate.
Contractual, contractually and everything.
You you do have an alternate, although Jim Hill will have. No experience with this. He's not been a member of the board at all during this time and. I. I think if there are questions about whether or not any of the members present can make that timeline, then. The discussion is probably moot. I think we need, if if it's even a question, then we need to say you have to have it on the first. And we can try to.
Whenever time it takes.
We can try to, yeah, exactly, we can try to work.
We've been here past midnight before.
That's that's what I'm saying, I I'm not opposed to having a five hour meeting if that's what it takes. And if we gotta answer all your questions on the first, then that's what we gotta do. I'm pretty confident. That when you get this back. That you might have some questions, but that. The work we've done, I think will. Will really address the comments and and through your read through, I imagine that you will have maybe fewer questions than you expect to at this moment.
I think it's pretty much a moot point anyway, cause I it's. It's an all or nothing, I mean, you we either recommend it as we receive it. Or we don't, we can always change it after the trustees approve it, once it's the township's document in their possession, it's theirs. You know. We're not gonna do any.
We can approve.
Big changes to the document, we can't.
You, yeah, I mean, I will and and I I would say that you guys do have an opportunity. On the first, the night that you're hearing this. To. Say, look, we agree with ninety nine percent of this, but our recommendation is that this one section is. Off or we don't agree with it, and so we recommend approval of it with this recommended change. The trustees may or may not agree. But that is an option that you have, you do not have to do it wholesale or nothing.
Right, and then that recommended change, if it doesn't get incorporated into this, then there might be some, I don't know what the decision point is, but some. Approach to say it gets resolved in the.
Exactly, then the next time we are reviewing the plan, we can say, look, we have this recommendation.
But then we're on record saying, here's a recommendation.
So if everyone's feeling as comfortable as possible, given all the. You know, timeline issues we're experiencing, then I think the plan is to still have our meeting on the first of June. And that we will send you the the document basically. With about a week to to read it and and um get your bearings on it. With the understanding that it'll take as long as it takes, no one's gonna be rushing you on the first.
So you'll get it on May twenty second and you think you're gonna send it to us on May twenty sixth?
And that's gonna be, it's a difficult timeline for us, but that's what we're committed to doing. We we can't give it to you Monday. And then have you vote on it on, I don't think that's fair to you. If we run into issues with timeline where we don't think we're gonna get it to you in time, then. We'll be contacting you to figure out if we need to change meeting dates and whatever. We're not gonna, we're not gonna do, send you something, but. I don't think that's gonna be the case. We're gonna put all of our resources towards it.
We get it then, so. We don't need to repeat what was said, if you've got that. And then say June first, we did a public meeting to, it'll be on the agenda. Okay, anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Can I second it?
Who who seconded? Oh, Rick. All I heard was Max.
We got him, we got them going on this now.
Mister Brown? Mister Geis? Mister Porter? Miss Dolber?
Thank you, Bert.